I'm waiting for the clock there.
Yeah, because that was what we were talking about at the time. It was just a floor of conversation. But look at the numbers.
But no, it's about the same as that anyway.
Are you guys ready?
Yeah, we just wanted to check off your numbers through to make sure that we're on the same page.
Okay.
We are.
And are we?
That's only a couple hundred thousand one way or the other. No, I'm linking.
Okay. Bill, you ready?
Yeah.
Okay. I'll bring to order the Berlin School Committee of January 11th, 2012. We are working, I think, on the payroll and payable warrants. And the consent agenda has the minutes of December 14th open session. Do I hear a motion to approve?
So moved.
And do we have anything to be said?
Eileen.
Okay, and all in favor of approval of the minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Communications, I don't believe we had any. Nope. Patisions and audiences relating to items on the agenda. No petition tonight. Thank you. All right. Move on to the reports. We have a CPAC report. Not tonight. Okay. Then we'll move on to the superintendent's report. Mike?
Zoom, zoom.
Was that to pass for you?
Well, just for the evocation of the Berlin Elementary School public, we did discuss this at the region at the last meeting. But just to say that the superintendent search, all the advertisements that have been out, they were posted on time. So far, we have eight applicants who have submitted paperwork to us for the candidacy of the superintendent. And we will assume as we get closer to the closing date, which is at the end of January, beginning of February, that we'll probably have more of the applicants at that point in time. Generally, it's the last week, week and a half, and most applicants do come in. As you know, the chairman of the regional committee did ask us to post out to the both communities at large for interested parties that would be interested maybe in serving on the superintendent search committee. We did put that on the website the very next day. And we are, once again, people that are either emailing us or calling in. We are taking those people's names, numbers down, contact numbers down. And at the conclusion of the closing date, I will forward those names to the chairman of the Tohonto Regional Committee. And we'll see kind of where we go from there regarding the superintendent search. I mean, some of that may depend upon the amount of candidates that we do receive. But it is going smoothly and we are on time. So I'll keep you postponed updated as to what's going on with the search. As you know, the competition for this is very, very keen, I mean, throughout the state. I mean, a week doesn't go by where we don't see at least two or three superintendents being posted, positions being posted. So the competition for those positions is extremely, extremely tight. A lot of positions being opened up and a very small pool of applicants. So we hope we do well. I certainly hope we do well. Okay. Probably said that the wrong way. I have good thoughts and good intentions anyhow. Okay. You asked me to take a look at the building use policy titled "Community Use of School Facilities." The file number in this force is KF parentheses capital B, small e, out of the school committee policy handbook. I did read the policy through very, very closely. It's basically four pages, double-sided policy. I found the policy to be very well constructed, okay? It does cover all the bases and all the areas that we would assume would be in such a policy as this. It's very, the language that you have here, the waiving of fees for certain groups, particularly town groups that are using, that'll be using the facility are in line with what most other towns are doing in terms of promoting community use. You do have that one clause in here, and I'll quote it. It's on the first page at the bottom. "Each individual user group that is not assessed a rental charge will be encouraged to provide donations that will assist with the maintenance and upkeep of the facility and grounds. And responsibility of the applicant for use of the building to see that said donations are presented to the school department prior to the community group final scheduled use of the school facility each year. Donations by check should be made to the town of Berlin and to the school department." And that is in accordance with Mass municipal law. So any donations that are made to building improvements, shall we say, or any donations to whatever particular, it may be purchasing computers or anything to do with the public schools, those checks should be made out to town of Berlin's school department. And usually identified as to what the intent is for the donations to be used. Those should be presented to the school committee. Those are put into a revolving account under the auspices of the schools. And therefore, when the time comes for purchasing of equipment or refinishing of the gym floor, which I know has been done in the past, then the school has, at that point in time, will go out and do the bidding in accordance with Mass bid laws. We assume the liability, of course, for anything that's going on at that point in time as the municipality. And those funds that are collected for that designated use are applied just for that designated use. So if we get donations from computers, obviously, we cannot take donations of the computers and spend it on library materials, unless the computer is going into the library. We can't use it on buying basketballs or things of this type of nature. So this is all in accordance with Mass general laws and I think is very comprehensive and very appropriate. Speaking with the building principal, Carol Bradley, I mean, she's informed me that the groups that have requested to use the facilities here have done so in a very fastidious manner. They have applied, using the appropriate forms, they've applied on time. They've done everything that they should be doing at this point in time. As we reported last time, you asked us to report how much was in the revolving account. And I think it was $570 or $80, is that about right in that account?
Yeah, $572.35.
$572.35, so $572.35. And we have received no new deposits this year.
Okay. And as I was looking over it, I was thinking, you know, we should put in there that they should be encouraged to provide donations that would assist for the maintenance. And then I realized, it's already there.
This is true.
I'm sort of like highlighting it as you give out the policy to someone, I don't know what else you can do.
The only thing that I discussed with the building principal, because I think the main focus, unless I'm incorrect on this, because I haven't even been here a year, so just if I'm wrong, tell me I'm wrong. But I think the main focus of this has been basically the maintenance of the gym, which tends to receive, I think, the most use of any parts of the building. And I think that groups in the past have resurfaced or refinished the gym floor and have bought basket scoreboards, should I say, for the gym use. Speaking with Carol, that's done on, not the scoreboard, but the gym floor is done like almost on every other year type basis. We certainly could get a cost for approximately what that is on an every-year basis using inflation and could suggest to groups that are using the gym that we could break that out over a two-year period of time and come up with an amount that you would encourage them to donate for the maintenance of the gym. Kind of a backdoor ransom, but I think it's, no, maybe it is, it's probably fairly direct. And in terms of encouraging, sometimes people want to, gee, how much is it? So we could certainly provide that information and suggest over a 24-month period of time about what it would cost to maintain the facility. So you get a cost estimate, a pretty solid cost estimate, on what it would be and perhaps what those donations should come up to be over a two-year period of time.
Can you refresh, can we, you were fresh, is it every other year or is it every third year we do a deep?
We haven't actually done that yet, the real deep one where you take down everything, strip it right down. We haven't done that typically. I was talking to our head custodian about that. He said that could be 15 to 20 years before you actually have to do something like that. It depends on the wear and tear on the floor. So we've just been doing, as far, to my knowledge, every other year.
Every other year, we've been just doing the light surface kind of thing.
So we're into our 14th year now. It was actually today, somewhere.
June 10th.
Yeah?
I mean, from my prior experience in resurfacing gym floors, I think it's something you do want to be careful about when you do that surface grinding. After a while, it can only be done so many times. And then, of course, the use of the floor at that point, it will exhaust itself because then you get down to nail heads and other kinds of caulking in the floor and things of this type of nature. So I mean, if it's not necessary, certainly want something, want to prolong or postpone as much as you possibly can.
I guess I didn't realize that they could designate their funds specifically to floor refinishing or they could designate it to?
Anyone that makes a donation to the Berlin Memorial School, to the school system, can designate the funds for expenditure any way they see fit.
Can they make it undesignated in the sense just for building maintenance?
Yeah, just to, actually, any donation that's given, you know, in a Massachusetts general law, donations as you know need to be accepted whether it be for town or by board of selectmen, school, by the school committee. And they need to be designated for what their intended expenditure is for because otherwise, especially the town accountant won't let you touch it. But certainly, educational institutions all the time receive donations outside of what we're talking about specifically here, that can say even something as simple as, "For educational purposes." Okay? Then that means anything within the school that would normally be spent on, you know, within the school department budget. But many times, people have something specific that they do want to make their donation for. And oftentimes, it is, as Dr. DeBrul mentioned, computers, the type of thing that you're talking about, the gym floors is kind of, is common actually, scorekeepers, that is common. There are some things that really are more common. Libraries are very common, things of that nature.
Colleges do this a lot too. If you get a college solicitation and you'll see it, and sometimes they'll ask you, they'll have four or five checkboxes, scholarship, infrastructure development, I mean, scholarships, I mean, they'll have things that you can check off there or they'll put undisclosed for unrestricted use.
I guess, could you, you could specifically designate it down to like the gym floor, but could you do it general, a little more general and do maintenance of the gym?
Sure.
They certainly could. Absolutely.
Which probably might even be more appropriate because there might be other things in the gym that need to be upgraded besides just the floor.
And the problem is kind of what I was alluding to is sometimes if people are so, so specific. There have been times, and you will find in almost every town, where you actually have donations that have been there for 50 years because nobody can touch it because it was designated. Actually, we had one in Uxbridge that was for an organ fund. Well, they got rid of their organ in 1968, you know, so, you know, if you can't. But there is actually a way called psy-press that you can go through the court system to get that changed. I've known of some municipalities that actually had funds for, from the 1800s, and this is a real case in Massachusetts. It was for a horse trough. We don't have horses anymore, so I actually went to court and they actually allowed it to go towards building a swimming pool, municipal swimming pool. So there are ways you can get, you know, work through that, but we want to try to, you know.
We have horses in Berlin though.
Drink from a trough, so. But yeah, it can get interesting.
Yeah. I think the Tohonto Gym, they might have been doing, I think they did a light sanding refinishing every year around Thanksgiving. And then about every seven years, at least it used to be, I don't know.
It probably.
It gets probably a little more use even than.
That's why.
Well, it's competitive athletics too. And it has a lot to do with the dust and the sand that collects on the floor that you just can't get up after a while and the floor actually becomes slippery.
Right.
So it, I just happened to be talking to Peter Mackey about that this week. I don't know why, kismet, I don't know.
So at this point, does the school committee feel comfortable with leaving the policy the way it is?
I think it might be a good thing to find out how much it costs every other year and make them aware.
We looked into that this summer and I feel like we have a good relationship with the rec department at this point. And they're very open. I've been talking with the rec coordinator and we've been working on that piece of the floor, so, yeah.
That's good.
Okay. Yeah. You, at some point, are you asking them to do like a presentation on what it would cost for these donations? Or just per year?
Just making, I was just saying, making the rec department aware of the cost that we're incurring on resurfacing.
I'm assuming that it is mostly the rec department that is using the gym. Not, I mean, it's not, they are sponsoring the groups that are in the gym.
And most of them are our children.
Right.
And then the other folks using it are some of our after-school programs that we run through a link.
Okay. Okay. All right.
So do you want to direct the administration to basically to cost that out and make that aware? Maybe in a letterhead to POCs and recs and other interested parties that are using the gym?
That might be a good idea.
I think it would be, just to make them aware.
Friendly then.
Reminds them that we're still here.
I'm sure I could do that diplomatically.
Friendly information.
I mean, I hate to get to the point where we don't have a way to pay for having the gym floor done because the budget's so tight. I guess that's what I'm worried about. Okay. Let's see, Director of Financial Services report, do we have one this evening?
Well, I will, I just wanted to inform you that I will be preparing for all three, just the budget reports very soon. And if your next meeting is off enough, I will be sure to email it to you in advance. You're not waiting too long for it. Secondly, I did meet with the Food Services Director yesterday. We had a lengthy meeting, went over projections through June 30th. I just want to review them. I had a couple more questions for her. Kind of went over more about the program itself broadly. So I want to double-check the projections that we have, double-check the payroll projections and the questions that I ask when I hear back from her on that too. I'll be doing report too on the food service program and get that over to you too.
All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Should we backtrack and is there a CPAC report now? Okay, we'll go back to the CPAC report.
We have meetings coming up on Tuesday, I believe it's the 28th, the last Tuesday of the month. General meeting and Dr. DeBrul will be joining us. He was not able to come in September, so he's going to come to our meeting this month. And parents can come if they have any questions or if they'd like to meet him and talk with him. So we're hoping for a good turnout for that meeting.
As I reminded your companion up at Tohonto last week, it's not a roast.
Yeah, I've been here long enough. That would be more fun.
Julie, you're going for that?
So that's it.
Okay. Thanks. The principals report.
So I wanted to make you aware of some things that are happening at Berlin. First, Title I plans. This is based on where we were at with AYP and some of the things I talked about at the beginning of the year, what we were going to put in place. So we currently do have through the grant we received, a math tutor that's coming in halftime in the school and is working with some of the students who scored needs improvement, a warning, and just some children we feel need support in the third grade. So that person is spending time in our school during the day. We just sent out invitations to students to come for MCAS prep courses that will run from the end of January to the beginning of April. And the first sessions, 10, 12 sessions are ELA and then 10 sessions with math. We have four teachers at the school who are going to be running those sessions twice a week. So after school for an hour each. So we're working away on that and hopefully we'll, that'll make a difference for some of the children, just to get the extra.
How many kids are signed up or?
We probably have about 30 something that we've invited so far. And then we're going to see what number we get back. We'll see if we can put it out to invite more students. So we targeted certain students and then we're going to put it out if we don't have a large group.
Okay.
This will give some of those students a chance to have, I think, more individual or small group attention too. And it's really, it's not about content, it's about skills and strategies for test-taking. And a lot of focus on that, so. So the other thing I wanted to let you know about on Tuesday is our professional development day. And I wanted to make you aware of it because I think it's special in the sense that it's, the staff at our school, the teachers and the paraprofessionals will all be there. And we've really designed it so that it's teachers helping teachers during that day. I put out to the staff not only to sign up for certain workshops to take, but asked for folks to run those workshops. And we had a number of people who stepped up as lead, in leadership roles to do that. We have the morning, we have, the special education department is going to do a roundtable discussion to start our day. And just some questions that folks might have about, around special education services in their classrooms and the use of paraprofessionals in the classroom. And then we're going to move into two workshops, the Daily Five, which was the conferences that some of my teachers went down to this summer. They're going to bring in some of the techniques and information that they learned and share that with their colleagues. Another is on flexible grouping. Flexible grouping is breaking down a class, for example, a math class, rather than just lecturing to the whole group. You pre-assess with a unit test, a pre-assessment, and then you look at where the children are at and then you break them down for that unit by their skill, where they're at. And we have two classes, two teachers or actually three folks running those different groups so the children get small group attention based on where they need the support. Or if they're moving ahead in that particular unit, they're strong students in that particular area, they have more enrichment opportunities. So flexible grouping is being used quite a bit in the upper grades and we're moving down the grade levels with that. And then in the afternoon, we have folks who are creating a website, their own classroom website. They have a chance to work on that and that's always been an issue because of learning how to do that and having the time to be able to devote to that. And we have Smartboard training. We have Touch Math, which is a system of helping students learn multiplication and addition, subtraction facts in a quicker way. And then we also have some folks who have asked if they can have independent team time to work on things like Common Core standards because we do have to align that K through 2 this year. So folks are working on that as well. So there's a lot happening on that day. And I think what's most exciting is that we haven't had to, we haven't brought somebody in to do that training. We're really relying on the expertise of our own staff and tapping into that, so.
That's it? Ongoing events?
I think we're pretty quiet right now. I think we went to a holiday concert. Nothing going on for a while anyway. Working on a school dance, but I think that's going to be in March for our sixth graders with Boylston. But it's the only thing happening.
Okay. Thank you. We'll move on to the business items and the FY '13 preliminary budget.
Well, according to Berlin Town Law, by law, we need to get a budget over to the board of selectmen and the finance committee, actually after this evening. As you know, we have the expenditure budget was voted by the region last week. So we're looking tonight to have a vote by the school committee for a preliminary, and I do emphasize the word preliminary, budget to be sent over to the board of selectmen in the FinCom. Obviously, the budget from both the municipal and the school side has major pieces of the financial picture missing at this point in time. Everything from, you know, Chapter 70 allocations, circuit breaker levels, charter school, school choice and lottery receipts and state aid to cities and towns and, you know, minimum numbers on net contributions and things of that type of nature. So it's very, very difficult, obviously, to actually figure out the budget now. But as you can see, I mean, what we have developed for you this year and as we reviewed at the last school committee meeting is we do have a line item budget. And with an explanation of all of our accounts, the actual budgets from 2010 and the expenditure 2010, 2011, the current operating budget we have, the requested budget, and of course, any of the variances. And we also indicated to you, Will, how much of the budget is accountable by state mandates that basically are of control at this time. So we look to forward to having, engaging in a discussion with the finance committee or the advisory board to the finance committee or both regarding the budget. And you can have and articulate a substantial conversation regarding the budget because this is an expenditure budget. This is what it does cost to run the programs that we have in place right now minus all the other major pots, the major pieces of the puzzle, which I'm sure we'll find out about in the oncoming months. We expect the governor's budget to be out at the beginning of February. I mean, from what I've read in the papers and what I saw on email today, I think he's going to be on time with the governor's budget, and he was last year. And that is helpful because now we have some guidelines or some idea about where the state is going in terms of things like state aid and Chapter 70. And I think also from, we have some figures coming out at the end of January from the commissioner's office.
That's correct.
On net contributions and things of this type of nature that we need to develop assessments that also impinge upon all the budget. So we have many more firmer numbers that we can build a budget upon at that point in time. But we still can engage in a conversation with FinCom because this is, and I will submit to them exactly what I'm submitting to you, because I think that was the direction the committee wanted me to do last month, is to give them also the line item budget with all the numbers that we have. Because the budget at that point in time is totally transparent. I mean, they have what we have. I mean, they can see exactly what the operational cost to run the program and any of the variances that we have from year to year in the program. And we'll have a line item explanation for the board of selectmen and the FinCom in narrative, identifying by account number, these salient variances, not small things that come up, the major things that they would normally target in on, why did this go up 1,000 and why did this go up 5,000, whatever it happens to be. And we'll have a line item explanation for that, for them, to explain those major increases or decreases in the line items. Once again, to promote, you know, full communication and full transparency regarding the budget. Of course, we will be there to answer any of the questions that they will have when we begin those budget deliberations with them. So I don't know if you want to go through the budget again as we did last time or?
If there's anything that you want to point out in particular, but I think, yeah, unless nothing's changed.
Oh, no, if anything's changed, I would tell you. I mean, that would be disingenuous to do anything like that. I would not do that. No, that would, nothing has changed at all since the last budget.
So just at the highest level, what is the cost of running the school upcoming year versus this year?
It depends what number the school committee wants to vote.
Well, you're right. The line item budget that's been presented is a 6.22 increase from last year.
No, nothing's changed.
No, nothing's changed on that budget. 6.22, the increase would be $176,307 from last year.
Well, yeah, because there's a couple of changes.
Right, this is a little service budget.
This is, no, this includes, this does include, I'll just go over some of the high points if you would like me to. It does include the salary for the position for the new superintendent schools, okay? That range was voted by all three committees to go up to a maximum of $135,000. So it does include that. It includes just a high point, the reinstatement of the district-wide tech coordinator. If you remember last year, that was cut 50% and basically Paul Marra was, he's been doing that 50% of the time, then he's been spending the rest of his time acting as the assistant principal or dean of students at Tohonto Regional High School. I mean, he's done a great job, but the two positions, the workload for the two positions, this is just not going to, it's not going to work out for this year. So we look to reinstate that position. Yeah, I'm just going for the big, yeah, I'm just looking at my notes right here. That also includes the teacher negotiated salaries that were negotiated by the school committee. It does, we have some major transfers within the budget from the general budget to special education grants and special education grants to the general budget. So we try to avoid that 9% retirement that we were being charged at the state level actually increases our buying power by 9%. But you'll see some major fluctuations, obviously, in the budget, which I have identified by line item again for not only you but for the sped committee. There are some increases in sped for mandated services, particularly in occupational therapy. There are some, some increases in sped for mandated services, particularly in, uh, occupational therapy and physical therapy. And there's also some decreases in there, uh, also. Uh, we do have an additional paraprofessional for, uh, special education student. Uh, that's in line number two, two oh four for, uh, twenty-two thousand, five sixty-six due to a change in the, uh, IEP. Like to remind people that we lost the entire jobs ed program, which is part of, uh, President Obama's stimulus package. And, uh, the, uh, that came out to the amount of, uh, almost twenty-nine, twenty-nine, combining numbers in my head here. Uh, almost twenty-nine, thirty thousand dollars in funds. So we did have that in, in this budget here, uh, for media tutoring position, uh, and, uh, an enrichment tutor position that was supported by the Ed Jobs Bill. That's gone away. If we wanna continue that program and services, then we need to fund that through the, uh, through the general fund. So, uh, that is level services, but it's an increase in the budget. So, uh, depending how you, one wants to look at it. We, there is some funding in here for curriculum coordination. As you know, last year, the full-time curriculum coordinator, uh, for the entire school district was eliminated. Uh, and this year, we are putting some curriculum funds, I mean, nowhere near what it costs for a curriculum coordinator. But for, uh, example, um, for the Berlin Memorial, it'd be, uh, basically nineteen, nineteen hundred dollars for curriculum coordination, for coordinating curriculum here within the school. And, uh, also some, uh, additional, uh, funding for a, a share of a district-wide person to do some district-wide coordination, coordination force. But this is all stipended after-school, uh, activity. Uh, bottom line is in comparison to what we were paying the, the curriculum coordinator, maybe between all three schools together, maybe it's, maybe it's ten thousand dollars between all three school systems. So that, that is a, that is an increase, uh, different, I suppose depends on how you look at it. When you talk about level services, is, is that level services? No. But it is an increase in the budget. I mean, there is, there's no question about that. Uh, something that have gone up that we, that are hard for us to, to control are obviously general supplies, particularly in the cost of ink cartridges. Uh, following the tech budget, uh, that's, that's gone up, uh, by forty-four hundred dollars. Sped transportation is, uh, we're projecting a fifteen percent increase for thirteen thousand dollars in special education transportation. That is a mandate. Uh, Mr. Allen Court informs me that that may come in, uh, less than fifteen percent, uh, and it may not. The last bid that we went out on for that demonstrated a fifteen percent increase, but we're, actually, I'm going to a meeting tomorrow afternoon to talk about that again. But we budgeted for, for that full projected amount, um, at this point in time. Um, food services, uh, four thousand for food, food services. Um, some additional custodial supplies for about sixteen hundred dollars. Some of that reflects some special cleaning solution for a student that's very highly allergic that we need purchase for. Heating oil was, is a real issue. I mean, it was three, three dollars and twenty-one cents a gallon this year, even though we buy that through a collaborative bid process. And that bid is a real fresh bid. I mean, it's only, it only came out a, a month ago. But that, uh, represents twenty-three thousand gallons, uh, in, in, in dollars, it's twenty-seven thousand, five fifty-four. Is it level services? Yes, it is. Is it an increase in the budget? Absolutely no question about it. Um, and other smaller things that, that, uh, that, that we need to do. We have applied two hundred thousand dollars from the school choice account to this budget.
And that is what was applied last year, correct?
Um, I have to look at my notes.
You mean the current year?
The current year, sorry.
Hundred and fifty-three thousand, seventy-nine, so it's applied this year.
Okay, so you've applied an additional...
Fifty thou- forty-six thousand, nine hundred and twenty-one dollars to that budget. We feel very, very comfortable with that.
Okay.
Very comfortable with that. And, uh, as you know, it, we had put into the budget that if you wanted to reduce the budget more, there's consideration that we could apply another fifty thousand to that if you so wished to reduce that percentage this evening.
Is anybody...
Is it, did I answer your question?
Yes.
And did you, did he answer your question?
Yeah, well, I gotta go.
I don't wanna figure it out.
Somebody else came up with another one. I aim to be thorough, wanna make sure you get your money's worth, you know?
Well, okay, Carol?
It was a, all the copies were passed out last week, I mean, last, at the last budget meeting. Yep, we did pass them out.
Is this the same as last time?
Nothing has, nothing has changed.
Okay. You can have this one, 'cause I have one.
Yeah, but we did pass them out at the last school committee.
Anybody else? Just my general feeling about it at this point in time, we haven't met with the, the FinCom. And it's not an outrageous number and sometimes it's come in at twenty percent or twelve percent or, I think, six point two percent as a first run through the budget is not outrageous. And we, I, I think we should get some feedback from the FinCom before making any cuts. Um, I feel comfortable with this budget going to the FinCom and the Selectmen. I don't know.
We should ask to, to see where we get with this. But I think we should be prepared to look into, um, the additional fifty thousand dollars that...
The school choice.
Funds.
Right.
Um, because the state, as we said last time, is looking at how much we have and that's gonna increase greatly, if I'm right, for next year.
We're taking that into account with the, with the additional fifty, well, forty, I have to look it up, forty-nine thousand.
You're talking about the school choice?
Yes.
Oh, yeah, okay. I don't know if you meant...
Nope, school choice.
Yeah, we're, we are, we're taking that into account, the additional forty-six that were all, almost forty-seven thousand dollars this year. And the possibility of the other fifty. But yes, I mean, school choice is not supposed to be a, a watch list, so to speak, or a kitty that you just keep compiling. It's supposed to be used for the use of, use of, of the students.
So I think we need to keep that in mind.
Yeah, and there was a couple of other suggestions earlier, I think, as to what we could do if we need to.
Well, we will have a, a list of, depending upon our conversations, once again, it's a preliminary, I can't emphasize enough, budget. Uh, we have no other numbers and until, I think I said, I think I agree with you, until you meet with the advisory to the FinCom or the FinCom, uh, municipal government, um, will have, uh, suggestions for reducing the budget to whatever the school committee is comfortable with.
Yeah, I'm comfortable with it. With the caveat that it won't come down.
I'm guessing it will probably have to. So do, I hear a motion. To approve the preliminary budget of two million and hundred and thirty-five thousand, six hundred and nine. And have it forwarded to the Board of Selectmen and the FinCom for FY thirteen.
So moved?
Is there any others? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Is there anything else on the budget, Mike, or we're all set?
Uh, that's it for now. I mean, we will certainly keep you updated and as Ms. Keegan said, as soon as we get some, some numbers at the end of, I mean, I know it's a different, a, a, a different district, but it's kinda hard not to talk about budgets without talking about the region too, uh, because it doesn't affect budgets both ways. But as soon as we get those firmer numbers towards the end of January and we see that governor's budget will allow, I mean, we will come back and we will present to, um, all the school committees. But, uh, obviously, in this case, the, the Berlin, the Berlin School Committee, any additional, what we see is the additional revenue streams, uh, coming in, you know, from, from the state. I'm sure we'll hear the same from municipal government to, and begin to like really talk about the finality with more, with more certainty and more finality what the budget will be, particularly, I think, this beginning of the month of February and the, the beginning of March.
So both budgets will be forwarded to the Boards of Selectmen?
Absolutely, yeah, the regional budget is, uh, the expenditure budget is all set to go. Um, this budget after this evening, uh, written a letter to the Board of Selectmen, I'll just finish it tomorrow because I wasn't sure what the bottom line numbers were gonna come out be tonight with the school committee was gonna vote. And we'll have that over to, uh, which I've communicated already to, um, to Eloise and, uh, the Advisory Board to the Finance Committee.
Mr. Sardell?
At the day. We will get, we'll have that over to them this week.
I have heard that they, the FinCom itself is starting to have appointments or will be shortly with the different departments. So I assume that they'll probably be in touch, um, with it, with your office at some point to set up a time.
The later the better, so to speak, not, not too late, but I mean, obviously, it's, it's good to have a conversation when the number's a, a firm. We certainly can still have a, a fruitful conversation about the line item expenditures.
Okay. All right. Um, the next thing on the agenda is an additional capital planning request that, um, I believe we overlooked at the last meeting. We did not vote any, um, technologies, so I don't know. Mike, you wanna go over what, what the request is for?
Sure. Chris, uh, Chris and I, um, met with the, um, Advisory...
The FAC.
Thank you very much.
Financial Advisory Committee, which advises, gives, gives advice to the FinCom. As they said, they do the grunt work for the FinCom.
Very fruitful meeting, uh, actually enjoyed myself, it's, uh, wasn't that difficult. But, uh, we talked about a number of the, uh, the, uh, capital requests that we put in, I think, and answered, uh, I think to their satisfaction, all the questions they had on what the school committee had forwarded. And, uh, as you know, most of the, uh, items that we did have submitted on, on a capital request forms were, were approved to be forwarded to the, to the FinCom. There was one, and, and I think just because this, it's been handled in different kinds of ways the last six or seven years, but it has to be with the computer replacement cycle that occurs at the, uh, at the Berlin Elementary School. So there's been some years where the, uh, this, the, the intent was to put in fif- approximately fifteen thousand dollars, uh, a year to continue the replacement of computers at the Berlin Elementary. So I think that's Mr. Sardell Wood, and I hope I have his last name right, uh, that, uh, it didn't, they don't go all down at one time and we're stuck with the, with the hundred thousand dollar bill.
Right.
So, um, but some years it's been fifteen, like three or four years in a row was fifteen thousand dollars, one year it was zero. I think when, many of the times were very, very difficult and another year it was seven thousand, another year it was zero. So I think it was, uh, we're not su- people were not sure as to whether th- this would continue to be in, uh, kind of like on automatic pilot, shall I say? Or do we have to actually put it in again? So we're, we've been encouraged to put it back in again. So, uh, after our conversations with them. So, uh, I think once again, a lot of gr- very good questions were raised, um, uh, by the, by the group at that meeting in terms of our, our, our projections and the expenditure of money that is currently in, still left in that warrant article, I think it's approximately about seven thousand dollars. And, uh, we have purchased orders for all of that right now, uh, for, for the, those, uh, basically hardware, a lot of hardware issues that need to be done, uh, in the server room here. But for next year, uh, this would be the replacement of, uh, twelve laptop computers, uh, six desktop computers, one LCD projector for, uh, fifteen thousand dollars, uh, which we have outlined, uh, to be forwarded to, uh, the, uh, capital, uh, and, and for the capital improvement. And, uh, I believe they've already forwarded that, but I quote, the school committee has, they've, uh, voted to approve that to be forwarded. But the committee really needs to vote that tonight.
Right.
To make it, uh, make it official.
So are there any questions?
Are we replacing broken equipment or are we re-upgrading or updating the equipment?
Well, it's a combination of both. Uh, there are some things that are broken that we are replacing in the server room. There are things that are, could go down anytime with, with the deal. Like we have a fan there that needs to be replaced in the server room. We have some master switches that need to be replaced that were, they're nearing their life expectancy. If we do not replace them, we, we will replace them this year, it has nothing to do with this. But if we do not replace them and they go down, then the whole server, everything goes down. Um, and so that's what we intend to do, uh, this year. Some of the, um, computers that we have, and, and Carol, feel free to jump in anytime you want if I'm saying anything, if we might say something wrong. Uh, we're looking at replacing computers almost on like a five-year cycle, five and a half year cycle. So we have, we have some new computers in, in the building, uh, some of them bought for special education. But a lot of the, uh, computers that we have are starting to get into that five, five and a half year cycle. And sometimes it's not a question about whether they're broken down.
Right.
They're not working, just sometimes, just because the way technology moves forward, um, they cannot run the software that is out there at this point in time because they just don't have the capacity and the speed to run, to run what's available right now, particularly when you get five, five and a half years of, of age. If they do go down, um, just like replacing a hard drive is two to three hundred dollars to replace a hard drive. A brand-new, a brand-new tower is, you know, four or five. Um, you know, I gotta test my hard drive one down last week, so, uh, so it's, that is what we're trying to do.
I think that's good. I said I wanna confirm that we had a plan and that we were upgrading them, you know, in a four to five year cycle.
And then we do have a replacement cycle, which I, I did forward to you for a five-year cycle. And it's a, once again, on FY thirteen, it would be twelve laptops, six desktop, system desktops, one LCD, FY fourteen, eighteen laptops. Um, and whatever desk, desktops we can, we can get, depending upon what's voted, of course, I mean, it's how they vote FY fourteen and fifteen. But that would be, that would put us on a five, a five-year plan to keep everything updated here at the, uh, at the Berlin Elementary School. Want to add to that, Carol, or do I?
Yeah.
Okay.
All set to make a motion? Do I hear a motion to approve the fifteen thousand dollars for the, uh, FY thirteen capital plan for technology?
No, I think you want the one down the hallway. End of the hall. Unless you want the school committee.
So made the motion, someone? She made the motion, you seconded it?
Yeah.
Okay, so all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Ma'am, Chair, first, can we just talk about the boiler?
Yes, you, you should if you'd like.
Thank you, I would.
We have lots of people and lots of things to help us...
Okay.
Through some of the things that we've asked for in the capital plan, oh, yeah.
One of the things that we discussed at the capital plan, uh, y- yesterday was the, uh, items for replacing, uh, boiler replacement items that need to be done, and that has been voted also to go forward to the FinCom. And I believe Ms. Saul at that time, uh, brought up the idea about, uh, water filtration. Since water filtration is causing a lot of the issues that we're having with boil replacement pots, that the water being so hard. I think it's hard and that it's causing those boil plates to basically disintegrate over time. And that's why we have to keep replacing them, she, she talked about water, water filtration. Um, so we did actually look into that a little bit today, knowing we had school committee meeting tonight. And, uh, I know, uh, Harold Bradley spoke with, uh, Joe Baldessari, uh, whom, head custodian, whom we shared with Boylston. I actually spoke with him today down at Boylston Elementary School, uh, just regarding the water filtration, uh, question. And, uh, from what I'm hearing, and I have no way to verify this, but I guess it was in the original building specs. It was pulled, okay, uh, from the original, original building specs. No, because that's fourteen, fifteen years ago, I'm sure when the specs came through.
Right.
So at that point in time, uh, with those, uh, with tho- with those building specs, um, we do not have any water filtration here right now. Um, I've talked to Mr. Baldessari, he has talked with White Water Testing, is that the correct name of the company?
They come in several times, they, right, once a month and then they come in for some for a big test.
And as you know, every now and then we get this really rotten egg smell odor in the school. Um, they seem to think it has something to do with maybe the water, the water filtration. Uh, Ms. McGoon tonight, uh, indicated from where she was working that maybe not be, maybe the hot water, the way that when the hot water is heated, which still may have something to do with the content of the water that's being heated. I am not a plumber and I'm not into hydrology or this type of nature. But, um, I would like permission from the committee to, uh, to send a, a letter to the, uh, cap- for, for capital planning just that we follow up on this and if we can get a quote, okay, or some more information regarding water filtration, okay, uh, to address this problem, um, that I'd like to forward that through to capital planning, uh, on, on behalf of the committee. Uh, depending what, you know, the numbers are, I have no idea what, you know, what, what this is and how much it would cost or, you know, anything at this point in time. But being that we won't meet for another month and capital planning is gonna forward those articles through, I just would like to get that information to them for them to make a, to either include, include or not include in, in that boiler replacement, uh, item, uh, for us.
The other piece that Joe brought up to me, and he probably did to you too, Mike, was that we would have to get the DEP involved in that because it'd have to be up to their specifications if we were putting this filter in. So it's, it would involve several steps to go forward, but right now he has to call in and we're just waiting for that person to come out. As I said, he's out every month, so, um, he'll take a look at that and give us some, you know, some estimates on that, so.
And that wouldn't keep us from going ahead with the boiler issue? And that wouldn't keep us from going ahead with the boiler issue, would it?
Oh, no. Well, the boiler issue has to be addressed.
It's dripping now, yes.
Right.
I mean, it has to be addressed. We're leaking hot water and it's just costing us money, and sooner or later those parts are going to go and we're going to have a major issue at that point in time.
I think we should look at what the water's doing because we can keep replacing parts time and time again. If we don't address the problem, we're just going to be going through this again and again. So I think that would be a good idea.
And since it was suggested by that committee, I thought it'd be an opportunity to follow up on it, so.
Right.
Mike, did you want to mention deferring the Plexiglas of the secretaries, too, that was deferred?
I don't know if the committee wanted to go through the items that were moved on and not moved on. Did you want to do that, or?
If there's anything you want to share, that's fine.
Well, it's really up to the chair in terms of what you want to share from that committee.
I think the boiler was the most important issue. I think Carol and Mike probably found that there's a few people with some strong opinions about certain things that were at the meeting, and they represent some of the people in town, too. So, you know, I don't.
I have a list if you'd like me to go through. The boiler replacement went through, was forwarded for sixteen thousand, which we've talked about. The sound buffer for the cafeteria, the cost of three thousand, was approved. If I'm wrong on any of these, let me know, okay?
Yes, yeah.
The class partition for the secretary for forty-one hundred, that was deferred. And the roof survey was approved for thirty-two hundred dollars, after some discussion. And the amplification system for kindergarten, kindergarten for fourteen hundred dollars was approved.
Yeah. And the partition, like we discussed at the meeting, even though they may not recommend to the FinCom, the FinCom could have a completely different opinion, the partition between the secretary and the hallway.
I think the argument there, the cogent argument that was presented was, when the sixth grade goes up to the high school, maybe instead of looking at a partition, maybe we should look at that whole area.
Right.
Is that what you remember?
Yes, rearranging things a little bit. Maybe look at it in a different light, rather than thinking you're going to be the same, you know, forever and ever.
Well, two years later, you'll have to take the partition down.
Because you will have a little bit more space. Right, right. Look at what the problem really is and if that's the right way to fix the problem. Which, you know, is a good suggestion.
No, just your own one comment, yeah.
But, I mean, I think these things will still go to, they will still go to the FinCom, and you'll get feedback from them, too.
Okay. And I forgot, I knew, oh, it's Carol with this also.
And if, you know.
Forgot to include you when I said it was just Chris and I.
Right.
Actually, I actually did most of the talking, so thank God.
So, is there anything else, or any other questions from the committee?
So I will forward a letter through regarding the water filtration, if it comes through.
I feel comfortable with that. Yeah? Okay.
Yeah, I think, yeah, they put the, yeah.
Okay. So, let's see, are we through with the capital planning request? I believe we are. The Chair's annual report, or actually, the Chair's still actually working on the report, so. I can bring it to the next meeting, put it on the next agenda, if the committee wants to look at it at a meeting, or I can forward it to you, and you can just let me know if there's particularly wording I could use help with. But whichever you prefer.
That would be fine.
Okay. Acceptance of donation. And Mike, I'm going to let you explain that.
Why shall I have Ms. Bradley talk about it?
Carol.
Because the donation was actually given to you.
Right, yeah. Right before Christmas, I was approached by an individual who's a parent to the school and asked, wanted to donate a sum of money for the purchase of laptop computers for the upper grades upstairs. And so that's really what this is about, it's twenty-five hundred dollars, and we're excited and thrilled to have it, that it means a few more children can get on laptops who will do research upstairs, and we're in great need of that. So that's what this donation is, but the person asked me to remain anonymous. So I will try to do that. But I would like to thank that person very publicly. We are very grateful for that donation, and the person is just wonderful about doing it, very humble individual, so.
Okay. And because of the policy that we have, we need to approve the, or accept the donation, I guess, as the School Committee. So, do I hear a motion to accept the donation of twenty-five hundred dollars for laptops? Second? Say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Okay. Thank you very much. The next thing's on the agenda is the Reed Tyler Scholarship Application Review. And do you want to remind us why we're doing this, or? I don't know if we do, I don't think.
I don't.
Oh, you do, that's right. Yeah, here we are. This is the actual draft of the scholarship, correct? Yes.
So this is?
The Subcommittee that was, did the process last year, suggested to the School Committee that in the future, instead of reviewing, I guess it's been common practice for every applicant to be considered for a portion of the scholarship money. And the Subcommittee that was in, for intact last time, suggested that maybe fewer individuals get more money than to try to divvy up a pot of money to every individual that applied. So that is, I believe, am I speaking correctly, Carol? Right. So we wanted to review the application process, or application, to see if there's any edits that need to be done, and if the committee is interested in giving that kind of a charge to the Subcommittee. And then the Subcommittee can come back and make any kind of recommendations they want.
Right.
So I guess that's the discussion that's on the table.
Okay. I know, like you said, I think the Subcommittee has been able to come back if they wanted to. I think they could have recommended particular applicants that they thought might be more worthy of the scholarship than others. I guess I always thought that that was the case.
Well, I think precedence, you know?
Right.
We did it a certain way, and we just kind of followed that procedure. Carol?
I think we did make some changes when we come back. Years ago, it was always, you take twenty thousand dollars and you take ten children and you just split it evenly.
Right.
And then, when we started doing it together as a committee, we did it kind of in a tier system. So we sort, you know, we said, well, these people should get this amount, and then this tier two would get this amount, tier three would get this amount. But still trying to keep in mind the history of it, where everybody got something. And then the committee last year kind of talked about, do we want to still continue doing that? We had tweaked it a little and changed it to that tier system, but do we want to still consider that everybody gets something, or do we want to say, you know, maybe, whatever, five people share the twenty thousand dollars rather than everybody trying to get something? So we just wanted to kind of throw that out for discussion, I guess. But we know the committee can kind of, some input, but we thought everybody here should have input into that as well.
And I think the other thing that we saw was the number of applicants increasing and the pot of money decreasing.
Right.
So it kind of like, okay, it just, you know, I believe that Moses Reed Tyler wanted to make an impact on somebody's education. And I, you know, these days, unfortunately, two hundred or a hundred dollars doesn't make a big impact on, you know, a college bill at this point. So that was the other thing that we saw as a change. So I don't know if the committee wants to give the Subcommittee, which I know they already did have, the ability to come back with any kind of suggestion they wanted. But I think the Subcommittee just wanted to hear feedback from the School Committee. And if we need to make changes to the application. We can do it probably soon.
Okay.
I recall right offhand either of them, but I think there were other small changes that one of the members thought that should be made to that application as it stands. Just to clarify some things, but I don't have it with me, so.
No, I have mine that has a note on it. But thanks.
I don't know whether, was Cheryl, do you know, Mike, Cheryl was expecting us to go ahead and say, send these out now? This isn't the time to send them out, is it?
Just, no, just waiting for you.
Is it March or something?
Well, the deadline, I think that, well, she changed the date for the deadline, so it's May fourth, two thousand and twelve, so we can have it in time for graduations, and at least for the seniors that apply.
Right.
It's not just limited to seniors, but for the seniors that apply, it's nice to be able to.
So I don't think she was going to start distributing it right away, so.
Well, we'll distribute it whenever they, it's up to you. This is your call. Whenever the Berlin Schools.
I don't remember when we have started in the past, but it was this early. I don't think so.
I don't think so.
But I'm just thinking back, I think the other person on the committee suggested that maybe the date be a little bit earlier, which gives the committee more time.
The deadline date?
I think that was one of the ideas.
April fourth is tight.
Because we have to have it done within like three weeks.
June, June third is, I think.
So I think that was one of the suggestions, was to move that date a little bit.
Maybe into April?
Yeah, to give the committee a little bit more time to review the candidates' applications and their recommendations.
Let me try and make sure you have that page or something. Hold on.
Who is the area? Hi, oh, I'm sorry. Date.
April eleventh, that's what you have scheduled, April eighth.
Okay, but February eighth is the next meeting. And that's not too late, we could look at it again, February eighth, unless, you know, is that all right with you, Nikki? And then.
So, review it and suggestions and changes.
Right.
And this is the language from her will?
The quote is from his will, yeah. The quotes. I actually have a copy of the will, too. Was that something that you asked for?
I think the other committee members, Subcommittee members would like to have a copy of the will.
Okay, I'd like to see that, yeah.
They'll do that.
All right.
Is that electronically?
Yep, I do.
Oh, you do, okay.
I think I scanned it in, so I do have it electronically.
So I think that might be helpful, looking at the spirit of the document they're making.
Yeah, okay.
Should have done it before that.
I'm assuming that you would like to be on that Subcommittee again at some point? I wish you had such a wonderful time. Okay. Oh, I can forward it to you and Nikki, and then you could forward it to Carol and Donnie.
Do you want me to ask, or do you want to call Donnie?
Whatever you're comfortable with, either way, it's fine. I actually have it on my cell phone now. We've done it enough times. Well, I don't want to assume that I would be on the Subcommittee.
Okay. Have you seen me this year?
Not yet. Next year.
Okay.
So do you guys both have students?
I do one more year.
We may have a challenge.
One more year, though, so next year, Chris can pick it up.
Are you? All right.
Okay.
Okay. So we're going to put this on the agenda again.
Okay.
I'm going to forward the will to you two, and I can forward it to Cheryl, too. I'm pretty sure I have it. If I don't, I think she does. And if you, if you think of what, if there was any other questions besides the two or three that we just talked about.
Okay. I'll look at my notes, and if you can.
I'll look to the analyst, Donnie.
Okay.
Okay, that'd be great. So we will put it on the agenda for the February meeting. Okay. And public and School Committee comments. Just, they're all yourselves tonight, yeah. Okay. Future agenda items. In looking at the calendar, we most likely will have to, at the next February meeting, approve the articles, because the warrant closed the end of February.
I'm not sure what you're referring to.
The articles that will be put on the town meeting warrant, those capital items, for example. So we'll probably have to approve, again, saying, these are definitely the items that we're going to forward to town meeting, to the warrant. And I don't know if we need language.
The Board of Selectmen, wouldn't you just automatically place those on the warrants? Because usually they construct the warrant. I'm not sure how it's done here, but normally the Board of Selectmen, once that's gone from the Advisory Board to the FinCom, FinCom will, once again, it's done in a different town, but usually it's the Capital Planning Committee.
Right.
Capital Planning Committee at that time will approve the warrants to be presented to the Board of Selectmen. Board of Selectmen at that time bless the warrants and what's going to be on the town agenda. And they basically take it from there, unless they have other kinds of questions and they construct a town warrant. The School Committee's already voted to put these through to the Finance Committee and through to the Board of Selectmen, so I don't think there's any other action required on your part, unless you get some type of request from the Board of Selectmen or from the FinCom for conditional knowledge. I mean, in every, in other places I've worked, that's basically the way it is. Once the School Committee's voted to recommend these articles to the Board of Selectmen, to the FinCom, then the FinCom will recommend approval or non-approval generally, in terms of what goes, and the Board of Selectmen make the decisions to what's going to go on that warrant.
But who writes the article for the warrant? In some cases, John Roy used to do it.
Usually, usually the Board of Selectmen, the town manager, the town administrator, I mean, well, whomever, it's usually municipal government writes the warrant, because, or they may, their attorney may write the language for the warrants.
Because I think we've done it in the past.
Generally, the School can, we write the language for the warrants. I'll be glad to do it.
Yeah, we can do that.
Yeah, not a problem.
And that's what I'm thinking of, is to bring that language for each of those items to the next meeting, and we'll approve the articles.
Because it's also not coming from school funding either, so that's another reason why normally it's not run by, because we can't say, because actually, we can't even say, a warrant article must say the funding source. We cannot, we cannot, it has nothing to do with us as far as the funding source or anything.
Do you want me to, want me to check with the Selectmen's Secretary?
I would make an inquiry to that. I mean, we'll be glad to work with them in any way they'd like, I'm just saying that.
I just know that the warrant does close the end of February, so if we need to do something, we would have to do it at the next meeting. If not, then.
Yeah, it'd be unusual, but I mean, wants to write the warrant article language, I mean, I'll just look up the annual town report and see how they do their warrant articles, and I'll put it in that kind of language. But generally, most Board of Selectmen are pretty controlling about what goes on a warrant, I mean, the way that the language is worded, but whatever.
And usually they have to review by council, too.
It's always reviewed by council.
Yeah, it has to be, yeah, make sure the reality is, yeah.
There aren't usually any articles in the region. So I'll check with Peg, and I'll let you know.
Okay.
All right. And at some point, we'll hear a Food Services Report, and if there's any other information that you want to share about the new positions.
Yes, yeah, I'll bring it every town meeting.
Okay.
I think the other one's FY12, you know, quarterly FY12 budget, which is the way we have the budget.
Okay.
Correct, operate here.
All right. Do we have need for an executive session?
No, we do not.
Okay. So I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So we'll be talking.
Second. I'll say aye.
Aye.
Aye.